Right on schedule.
Thank you, Laura. Good evening and welcome to the November 6, 2023, meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being held in the Town Hall Auditorium because we're anticipating a good-sized crowd tonight. We are recording the meeting as well as broadcasting over Zoom. Is there anybody recording the meeting besides us? Okay, Dalton just came in. Dalton, I'm going to assume, just for the record, you're probably recording. All right, so first on the agenda, Boku Minutes. We have the minutes of October 16.
On the use of Academy Hall, Lauren, did we ever find those agreements or was there nothing?
I don't think I found anything.
I wonder if that should be another agenda topic down the road.
Well, the other thing I had mentioned was, I think Dick mentioned at a staff meeting that the original grant from Mrs. Sessions was that the Town Hall would be available for any resident to use. And I'd like to see what the language was in that as well. I know that may not speak to the rental part for a for-profit business, but I still think it would be interesting to have that document for edification on our usage or our grant of usage, if you will.
Welcome to the group.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Lauren. Good job. All right, so next we have the Fire Department to discuss the RFQ they're generating and an update on the generator. And we welcome to the table Chief Pullen and from Selectman, Mark Barber. Hey, guys.
Hello.
We presented a draft at RFQ for expansion to the Fire Department for the board to look over.
The first question I have is, the budget is for $50,000. Do we have to wait for the town meeting for that? I mean, where are we going to get the $50,000?
I think we would have to.
Town meeting or ARPA, right?
Right.
Good point. I mean, something like that. I turn to the Grand Maester. Something like that. Do you think there's, for public safety? I mean, there are grants targeted towards public safety type things.
I can look around, but I haven't, but I can see what's available. Maybe the one-stop program. I'll look.
And the other thing I have is... What's the time getting picked up or not?
Those are pretty good, Mike.
On page three, right, well, see, on page three, on number three, it says submission of a proposal. Start date of 15, 2024, but if we don't have the money, we can't do that, right?
Just as a point, the dates on this are flexible. Should have been XXX. This was sort of the draft. Tried to capture most of them and just put a blank.
Task two, task three, and task four, they mention a committee, a building committee, meet with a project committee, appointed by a selectman. I don't know if we decided to do that or not.
And again, that was up to you guys. They certainly recommended, in whatever form we do have. We need some kind of committee at some point, so.
I mean, that would be consistent with what we've done in the past. Obviously, we had a police station building committee.
Right.
We have the senior center building committee. I think a project of this size would... I know, of course, inundated with volunteers all the time. I'm sure we can draft some people to serve if that's what the board decides.
Is an RFQ before a committee, or do you think, or should we try to get a committee first? If that's the way we go?
I don't think so. I think you could start the process with this. But, I mean, you want to have a committee ready and placed at some point, which I don't think would take too long.
I don't think it'll be, I mean, obviously, as Don pointed out, the funding is going to be a thing.
Right.
So we certainly could have a committee close to ready at the same time we achieve funding status.
Right, right. Yeah, the funding would be for the work whoever you select to do it is. I mean, in theory, you could actually go through the process. It doesn't cost anything to put out the RFQ, determine who you'd want to pick as a vendor.
Right.
And I think over the years, I think we've done our due diligence with the reports, all the, you know, the building assessment study that Mitchell Associates have done. We have a lot of valuable information ready to go.
We've got $67,000 worth of it.
So this does seem to be, and not to put it down, this is a boilerplate type thing, and it should be.
Right.
You know, we don't want to, we're not inventing anything, whatever.
We're not, we're not, correct.
So would the, would the strategy be to wait until funding becomes available? Or to actually send this out as an RFQ? And maybe put together a committee to review the proposals and have a firm ready to go when and if funding becomes available.
I like the idea of sending it out because you're going to get a sense of what the budget required is. I mean, obviously, we just got a sense of the budget based on the senior center design. And if you word it correctly, you can also say this must be a price that's good for six months.
Sure.
Or whatever. That gives the board some...
It'd be a two-step process. RFQ comes back without any commitment on money. Review the qualifications, and then, once you choose a firm, the next step is to negotiate or get back and forth with the price.
Yeah, I know that's sometimes done. I'm just not a fan of that process because sometimes you get, all of a sudden, whoa, look at this price. So I like coming together, you know, get a sense of, because you could come back with one, like we saw in the senior center, two different things. And you always have the opportunity to negotiate with that price they gave you. So what is the board, what's the board's pleasure? Take this as a framework to start. Let's work on putting some dates in that we think are appropriate and let Bob do the work on sending it out with the Fire Department Committee, Fire Department. Who is honchoing it from your end? Is it pretty much you, Mark? Who are you?
Well, yeah, right now, it's been Chief and I.
Two-man committee?
Yeah.
You're talking about grants, right, and the chief had sent, I had asked him a while back what the top three things were. And one, two of the things he said were that the existing furnace has cross-air contamination via ductwork. The air comes from the apparatus bay and meeting, in the meeting room. The ductwork needs to be changed to isolate that. And then the furnace has been changed to natural gas, but they're not, it's not a high-efficiency unit. And the 1988 addition has two heaters that were converted to natural gas that aren't efficient. And existing windows, doors, and window, there is a question in this. The existing windows, doors, and need replacement. There's three doors and five windows. I assume that the air blows through them like, right, you know?
Yeah, they don't open or they're falling apart, yes.
And the floor, the flooring in the meeting room was asbestos, and there's no insulation on part of the building. So I guess what I'm waiting up to, do you think there's energy-saving grants that we could be used to fix those parts of the...
Yes.
To save money?
Green communities. I mean, I know we had a discussion and there's opposition to it, but they've got money.
Right, but are they going to buy the whole thing or just give us a discount like the Mass Save program, which is...
Mass Save is, actually, it's just been revived again and modified some. We can look into that.
I mean, it seems to me, going down the road here, that's something that could be done pretty expeditiously if we got a grant and would save the town some money and along with the energy and stuff like that. I think there's some lighting issues too, probably, that we could change the LED or something.
You know, we had a, we had a program, I'm going to say 15 years ago, where we changed all the lights in the Town Hall and the fire station then, but things changed. Prism came in at that point. But at that point, they were paying 80%, the town was only doing 20. It's flipped around badly now. But I think to Don's point, these are things that could be done separate from this RFQ.
Exactly.
Right, you know, any energy efficiency. Heck, Gary took advantage of the program and upgraded all his compressors at the Food Mart.
The Food Mart, yeah.
Explain to me this RFQ project, the process. It's new to me because I haven't gone through any of these expansions yet. What's the money actually going towards? The firm that's selected to go through the engineering or...
Yep, basically, the meat of it really is, or Don was mentioning, the tasks on page eight. Tasks one, two, three, and four. That's really what you're paying for. I mean, that's where they're going to do the work. They're going to come in, take the Mitchell report, take the Tecton report, meet with the committee, find out what the needs are, see what the deficiencies are. And then, basically, what they're going to come up with is two, and I think that's in task three, two conceptual designs broken out. I mean, that's, that's kind of what you're funneling down to. And then from there, you know, again, we'll be refining things and picking, basically, one of those two to come up with a true working, ready-to-build set of documents.
What were the designs that Tecton presented? Were they, were they just kind of rough, off-the-cuff things or...
Conceptual, sort of. I mean, they had ranging from, what, $5 million to $9 million or something like that. But they weren't, they weren't designs. I mean, there weren't anything...
So what this RFQ will do is, is give us actual plans, actual cost, of real-time cost, and not speculation of what they may be or what they could be. I don't think there's any way to bring this forward to town for any kind of vote if we don't have harder numbers. Then, well, it could be this, or it could be that.
So you think Tecton was more just to throw something at the wall and see if it sticks kind of thing?
No, I think there's still a benefit to it. I mean, it did flesh out some stuff, and I think it gave, you know, people awareness of what was going on. But certainly, the Mitchell report was, was huge. I mean, that was, you know, kind of the basis which kicked everything off here. Five years ago, we started this in 2018, so. But at this point, the next step is right where we're at. It's the, okay, we've got all this info. Let's wrap it up. Let's come up with a design. We're close. Let's come up with a design, hence numbers, so we can take it to the next.
So we're assuming that $50,000 is just going to be, we're going to assume that whoever comes back is going to be within that range?
Yep, good question. And when I was working with the guys in Pioneer Valley, he vetted this to a couple of architects and said, okay, this is what they're trying to do. And they try to write the criteria so you don't, you don't want somebody that's brand, a firm that's brand-new. But then again, you don't want a firm that's going to look at and say, no way. You want to get sort of that middle, middle range. And he certainly felt for picking a target number of $50,000. You were going to get...
You worked with PVPC on this, you said?
Yeah, yeah, they helped kind of put this together for us, yeah.
RFQ process was designed as a way to avoid the lowest qualified bidder process. In other words, you want to get qualifications, look at the qualifications, select a firm on the basis of its qualifications, and then negotiate a price with them. And if you can't make a deal, then you go to the second of the group of qualified firms and so forth. And I think it reflected frustration with the requirement that you had to go with the lowest bidder, who oftentimes wouldn't do a very good job.
Yep.
You get what you pay for.
What do we have in ARPA funds, Bob? What do we have left in ARPA funds?
About $500,000, but I mean, the water project.
That's going to eat that plus some, so.
Yeah, I am concerned about going too far ahead when we don't have a clear funding source. Unless, now, I know you're talking about the fact there's supposed to be more disbursements from both the state and the feds, hopefully shortly.
Yes.
Which could replenish what we need for the water project.
More money is coming. I think we're looking at maybe a six-month timeline for fiber and for other projects.
Well, for that type of thing, I wouldn't be totally opposed to saying we can keep the ARPA in the back pocket as a potential funding source, knowing that we need the money for the rest anyhow, yeah. So where do we go from here, then? How do we flesh this out to get this as a ready-to-go document?
Well, I can go over it. This says draft, get the electronic copy, go through it, make sure that, and I'm sure if you work with PVPC, this is done according to standard. And issue it and see what comes, see what firms come in. And we could just then notify, see, we could have a committee that would select the best firm and then just tell them there's going to be a period of time before the town identifies funding.
Okay, well, let's correct the dates, as Don said. I mean, obviously, those two dates are unrealistic. And I would still suggest you bring it back at our meeting Monday, not to keep kicking things down the road, but we do have some asterisks in here, some question marks. I'd like us to vet the final product before we put it out there. And I think, you know, again, we have a short week with holiday and stuff like that, so. Board, okay, we just put the final stamp on it Monday?
Yep.
All right.
Are we, we're going to have Bob look for funding sources too in that timeframe or?
Sure.
See what's available for...
Right.
I'll be looking for funding.
Because we're talking about not sending it out.
Funding this week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I heard something about sending it out without a, you know, without looking to fund something, right? Is that what you said earlier?
I wouldn't necessarily put the number in there. I mean, I'm surprised to see...
Oh, you mean in here?
$50,000, yeah, put there.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you'd want that there because the firms, they're not going to want to know. They want to know what they have to work with too, from what you're asking, so. Again, we can certainly check with Pioneer Valley and see if that's an option.
I just, may not to exceed.
May not to exceed, of course, you're going to negotiate.
It's going to come down to...
Right, negotiating.
Every dollar.
Right. And Bob, I can, I've got this in Word, so I can email that to you.
That's good.
Yep.
I'd like you to look at those energy things.
Right.
Okay. Next is generator. Can you give us an update where we are with that?
Yeah, I had a meeting with the building commissioner Friday. He was going to look into some codes. I believe he has deemed it as emergency power. I spoke to him this afternoon. He says he spoke with Mr. Markle about it.
I talked with him today. Actually, he said he might join the meeting.
Hello.
Yep, there he is.
So just to clarify, code dictates that it's standby power for emergency communication for first responders. So it's a standby generator that we're installing at the firehouse. Nothing more than that, you know, just to simplify, you know, terms. There's emergency and then there's standard. Basically, it's what it's protecting, the circuitry, and how quickly it splits over. So emergency would split over at like 10 seconds. You'd have that more for hospitals when you have life support systems and the such. You don't want to lose that power right away. The standby will, will switch over within 60 seconds, which is fine to support the, the communication aspect of it. And speaking with Ed, I kind of realized what was going on here. And I think what it is, is, you know, when we guys were installing a generator at the police station, I have tons of plans. I have reports from designers and engineers. To put one in the highway, I believe, was a similar thing where there was a designer involved. I think Ed may have installed it. But there's a plan. You go by a plan. Now, the designer will tell you, okay, if we're going to have three people quote on this, this is what they're all going to be quoting on. And they'll lay out the parameters for it. So the big problem here is, even though our chief is a master electrician for certain, he doesn't have the ability, probably, or the time, to design it. There's local firms that'll do it. It doesn't have to be a really high-end project. But at least that way, when you put out the RFQ, everybody's bidding apples to apples. It's the same job. It's not as simple as plugging in a generator at home. There's a little more to it. But by the same respect, the chief has an issue where the Fire Department's going to be expanding. And his concern is, he just doesn't want to throw money away and rework it later. So I think that's also where the designer or the engineer will come in very valuable because then we can convey our concerns about, you know, doing work twice or ripping things out and then go from there. But I think definitely, with regards to this project, that's where it should, should have started. Not that, you know, if a, a master electrician could design it, but again, it's best left to like an engineer or a designer in the field, and there's local companies.
Do we have somebody? Do we have somebody to do it?
I was recommended a local company today by Gary Courtney, our electrical inspector, because I had extensive conversations with him. He's done hospitals, emergency rooms, schools. We also did the police station. You know, and just, again, I've studied every, every piece of code book in my office, electrical, mechanical, name it. The building code is pretty clear with regards to what this use requires. So I think the, the next step would be just to try to meet with the designer and also the chief and convey, you know, his reservations with regards to what we want to put in and we don't want to do the work twice or waste money. And I think that's where Ed was coming from throughout the whole process.
So I have two comments. One is a comment, we don't know if the Fire Department is going to be expanded or not. That's up to the town meeting.
Right.
Number two, the, how much is the designer and how much does it cost to install it? How much would you expect the designer is?
I haven't even followed through on that. I've worked, for the most part, most of last week and all the weekend on just trying to get this process nailed down. We could definitely contact the designer and find out what the cost would be, but either way, it's the correct way to do it.
I'm not arguing that. I'm asking you how much it's going to cost.
I didn't get into dollars and cents today.
All right, well, so we could figure it out for next week.
Or I can just tell Bob when we know, or, you know, move it along from there.
Yeah, yeah, and how do you feel about that?
I think that's the correct way to go, I believe. I'm throwing names up. I think we used Hall Engineering at Agwam.
Robert Hall, okay, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Do you remember how much that was, that up? That was a while ago.
But they are, like Wendell says, they are the go-to in this area, yeah.
I'm just thinking, where are we going to get the money, if it's $20,000 bucks?
I don't think it's going to be that much, no.
I think it's valuable to have the plan to work with.
Okay, so I think we were just looking for a recap of where you are. It sounds like you have the right people on it right now. You, Gary, Wendell, working on it. If there's funds needed, that's when you have to come back to our board and say, is there a way, they had to go back to the A well, you know, ARPA well again. I don't think it's going to be that much, but the actual installation, you talked before about there's some money needed for wiring, pouring a base, things like that.
Yep, pouring, pouring the base, obviously, the, the cost of the concrete. Highway Department has offered to help us out with that. Not the cost of the concrete, but digging and stuff, if, if, you know, when we get to it, they're still, you know, they're not busy. And then electrician to pull new wires from the transfer switch at the front of the building out to new generator. So there'll be some cost in that, wire cost.
Now, this one's on diesel?
Yes.
Where do you store the diesel?
If you look at the generator, it's actually, looks like it's on a base, but that's, that's a thing. Yeah, it's the same as the Town Hall, same as the senior center.
Please. Because all I know about it is like, if I flip the switch, the light goes on at the house.
Well, it sounds like we got the right people looking at it right now. Again, we're here to help, you know, and just keep us in the loop, please, which I know you will when you need money.
Yep.
Great, Mark, great. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Next, I want to talk about a potential COA board member. Becky? Well, you sent a letter.
That was sent by the board.
Yeah, good.
It's on the board.
Talk about getting...
I was bored when I walked in the building.
Nice. So Becky informed us that the board voted to recommend the appointment of Amory Villamano. Fill a over-60?
Over-60.
How many open spots are currently there?
So we actually have more under-60 spots that are open. We're anticipating the potential of perhaps losing one of the over-60 members. And so we're still under what our max capacity is of a 12-person board.
I know we appointed Juanita recently.
Yes.
And Tina was also under?
Tina was under, but she...
She stepped off because she got hired?
She had to because she's an employee now. Yep.
Okay, so I did attend the board meeting via Zoom when you interviewed Amory. So I think it was a unanimous recommendation from your board?
It was. It was. She is interested in giving back to the community a little bit. She said she always kind of stayed in the background when Vinnie was on the board of Selectmen and was involved.
Everybody did, yeah.
So she's looking forward to contributing to the community, and she felt that this would be the place for her to do that.
I move we appoint Amory Villamano to the Council on Aging Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thanks.
The term, again, we always have this question. If you could work with Lauren and Bob on what the right terms are for your appointments, that'd be great.
Yep, I will. Great, thank you.
Although I did get a little nervous when you said you're going to be losing one of your over-65 members.
Oh.
Took that the wrong way?
It is the senior center.
Okay. Next on the thing we had talked about, Bob, I keep this, I mean, kind of generic, if you will. We have a requirement that the board work with the Disability Law Center for training.
Training.
We did one session, Don, was it a year ago already? It was a great time.
A date that we can convey back to them, and it's going to be about an hour.
Okay, and we talked about the potential, maybe we should reach out to the Disability Commission we have in town and see if they'd like to attend it as well. Now you expand up where you have, how many people on it?
Five.
We've lost a few. I did send a message over there and once we settle on a date here, I'll convey it over and see if any of the Disability Commission members are going to attend this.
Most of your members, in correction, are retired, so really, the...
There's one.
busiest person is probably you.
Correct.
Right, so if you had to throw out a date, and obviously, we have to do it, I think they want it done by the end of the year. What's a better month for you, November or December?
December because it's open enrollment for Medicare right now, and so I'm pretty booked through December 7.
So would you say we'd be okay offering sometime in the first week of December?
Most likely.
Okay.
After the 7th, yeah.
Okay.
I can, I can...
That leaves only Friday, the 8th. How about the following week, maybe the 12th?
Tuesday.
Oh, anything that following week.
Any reason why we can't do it at a Selectman's meeting?
I can...
Tuesday, the 12th, something to...
Wouldn't be broadcasting it.
Why not?
I'm pretty sure they were, I don't think it was something they were interested in public discussion last time. Certainly, I don't think, Don, we posted for it. I don't think, you can look into it, but I was pretty sure it was not a thing they were interested in discussing.
Oh.
It would be daytime.
Yeah.
So, okay, I didn't hear the question.
Well, I just said, why can't we do it at a Selectman's meeting? We're being required to do this, you know. You know, some of us weren't even on the board when we were required for this to happen. Why is it not public record?
If you, if you want to do it that way, I can see if, uh, they'll agree to that.
I suppose you could reach out about that. But like I said, the last time Don and I, we did that, it was really, it was afternoon, right?
It was afternoon.
And it was not a posted thing and it really, I don't want to say it got into a privacy thing, but I thought that was the whole reason for it, if you will. So you can look into that.
So I'll, I'll look into the 11th, which is a selectman meeting or the 12th.
Okay. All right. All right. I think we're done with that. And next we have the senior center building committee discussion, um, recap of the, the special town meeting vote. And the board is asked that the committee come in and discuss our next step. Hello, everybody. We added extra chairs. Thank you, Lauren and Jane.
They actually asked us for a meeting. Ask us at the end of the meeting.
Yes. I think we were angry.
They weren't happy. So, um, so welcome everybody here. First off, the board, I'd like to thank you for your service over the past year or so, when you've been meeting bi-monthly, I think pretty much on average. And you've really, and I've been there for a lot of those meetings and the level of dedication and attention, I don't think can be overstated. Obviously we know that Dwayne Mosher resigned from the committee, but I don't think we, I think we need to thank him for his service. Former selectman, former member boards, you know, and he gave this time like so many of you do. And we certainly thanked Dwayne for everything he brought to the table. So that being said, the outcome of article one, well, you guys appreciated being article one at the special time. In and out, thank you, we're done. Was, I think overwhelmingly successful. I think we need to thank Don Collins, who gave a great presentation. I will say, I still think you had a minute, hello? Where do we go from here? Kind of question. We had elf in the room. Dwayne came to our meeting, uh, dropped off the recommendation of the committee, had some concerns with the process and I think the, the board would like to, oh, he left and got right in the truck. Would like to open it up for the questions from my other board members. Don?
Well, uh, as you know, we took a vote. Uh, we went around the table. Uh, each person gave, uh, uh, their impressions of the two architectural firms that we interviewed, uh, and expressed their vote. Vote came out five to four, uh, and, uh, it was to recommend EDM, uh, who took part in the original design, uh, has extensive experience with nursing homes.
Senior centers.
Senior centers, excuse me. And AI, which was the other firm that we interviewed, has had extensive interaction with the town on other projects, but very little experience with nursing homes. In fact, one of my questions to him, he said, the principle was, um, you know, have you ever, your firm ever designed a nursing home or?
Senior centers.
Senior centers. I'm, I'm getting ready for the, I'm getting ready for the nursing. But anyway, had your firm actually ever designed a, a, a senior center? And, uh, and really the answer was no. So anyway, the, the vote came out, uh, five to four. Uh, everybody expressed their opinions, uh, and we forward a recommendation to the selectmen. You know, that you are the, the final say in terms, in terms of who would, uh, do the, take on the project. And, uh, anyway, so we were hoping that, uh, right after the town vote, that, uh, the decision would be made by the selectmen and that contract would be awarded. Our plan was to meet with them today. We had a regularly scheduled meeting today with the, uh, firm that was selected. However, uh, you wanted to talk to, meet with the committees. So that's why we're here. We're concerned because the whole schedule to have it completed for a fall town meeting, uh, is, is quite an ambitious, uh, schedule. And we've started off by losing two weeks. So anyway, so hopefully we can, uh, solve this situation and, uh, be ready to award a contract.
Uh, to make it clear, so we had a meeting today and, and Don Collins is the new chairman of the committee and Gary is the vice chair. And Rita, that's good, continue to serve as clerk. Correct? Or no?
Okay.
Oh, I thought you were.
I am.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Just one comment though. Don, you mentioned fall town meeting. We're looking for the spring town meeting.
First of all.
Yeah. That's our, the committee's goal, I believe.
Right. So it was five to four. All right. We heard the five. What's the four? What's their, what was their feeling?
Their feeling was the, the other AI.
Well, they're here. They could, you know, the entire committee is here so they could tell you what their concerns were and why they voted in one way and not the other. It's not that they voted, we voted against anybody, we voted for somebody.
Yeah. I just wondered what their reasons were for voting for the AI as opposed to the EDM.
Uh, I can speak for AI because I was one of the votes. And, um, whereas we say they did not have experience with a senior center from the ground up, but they did have experience as far as adding on or other senior housing type of experience. And their specialty is renovations and looking, and when they presented, when we interviewed them and they presented, they said that they would look at all of the operations and, you know, they, the existing, uh, I'll say boiler and lights and all that stuff and, and all those considerations. And that's their specialty. And the cost was like nearly half of the other. And, um, I personally liked architectural insights better.
They were more into renovation and fixing the physical plant?
They had listed two and a half pages of projects that they're, that are active today. And many of those were construction and renovations, constructions though, not with a beginning senior center, but with, um, reconstruction or additions or, um, housing, senior housing, municipal buildings are on there, that sort of thing.
No, when you said about, so like they didn't have experience with ground up.
Right.
Right. But they had experience putting an addition on or renovating.
Did either of the companies say they could meet the fall town meet or the annual town meeting deadline?
We were pushing them real hard.
Yeah. Did they both say they could make it?
Yes, they did. And they both, uh, submitted schedules. We gave them a second week in January, kind of drop dead deadline. Obviously with this delay, quite frankly, it's going to push and push hard probably beyond that deadline. There, there is some small amount of time available, um, by pushing the deadline. But we're honestly up against it because this is just the phase one where they will, based on a needs assessment, which we spent a year preparing, and their expertise come up with a renovation slash and or addition, um, idea. At that point, the committee will vote to accept their, you know, their design or whatever we end up with. And then it moves into a phase two where we need to either allow EDM to move forward as the architectural firm of design, final design. Or we look elsewhere if we're not happy with them. But regardless, we would be looking for spring town meeting to have, um, an architectural firm onboard and, um, a preliminary cost estimate for whichever choice we go for. And we pushed very hard to try to get this so that come spring, backing all of the Warren articles and all that, that needs to be done, that we could get it done. And as Don indicated, we were hoping that the selectmen would, um, review the vote that we took and move this forward with letters to the successful architectural firm and the, the, the other architectural firm so that we can then bring them in and get them going. And right now, as I say, um, it's, it's ambitious. But I think the fact that we spent a year defining the needs of, of the senior center with, I mean, this is a great group and they, and we've all worked hard that whoever gets chosen, I supported EDM. Whoever gets chosen can move forward fairly quickly with it. But delays just mean that we probably would miss spring meeting.
So, so I got two questions. Number one is what's the delay? They just voted last week.
Well, yes, you did. And we had given the chairman the task of giving that night to you, uh, our recommendations in the hope that you would approve EDM as a selected firm. And then letters could have gone out the next day to the selected firm. We're now two weeks beyond that point in time. So we've lost weeks.
One week.
Sure.
We just said last week, right? We couldn't have put it on our agenda last week because we didn't, it wasn't on the agenda at all, right?
I think it was. Cause Dwayne was on the agenda for the, oh, yeah.
The other question I have is, so EDM originally said 93,200 and they went down to 57,700. They, did they cut anything out of that? I mean, is there, just because they like us, they cut 45,000 bucks out or just?
Why not? No, I think they, it was more of a case they misinterpreted.
Yeah.
The original.
I, the request, you read the request? Yes. Exactly. The request was misinterpreted and, um, they were going over work that was already done. Okay. Am I correct in saying?
I don't have any to answer.
So it's still, and obviously I was at your meeting today, it's still the recommendation of the committee. You're looking for us to endorse your recommendation for EDM.
Yes. Well, we, we have to, then are we responsible for sending the letters out?
Yes.
Well, Bob's a procurement officer, so I think.
I was going to point out tonight that I've already notified BHB about the planning, master plan update. I've already notified Community Paradigm that they were funded and I'm waiting for tonight for a decision. We can notify if it's EDM, if your choice is EDM, they can be notified in the morning.
Just to rewind for a second, I probably should, we probably should have done this before, but I don't know if everybody on Zoom or meetings knows everybody on the committee. So maybe they just announced their names for the record.
Let me ask her.
That's good.
Go ahead.
Rita Vale.
To identify ourselves.
Don Collins.
Bobby Grant.
Mike Fedora.
Becky Moriarty, I'm an ex officio member as the director of the senior center.
Carol Keeney.
Cliff Bombard.
John Matthews.
Gary Weiner.
Thank you. Okay. So I want to take a motion to authorize the town administrator to send a letter to EDM.
John, could I? Something that, that's been bothering me about EDM. Number one, they're in Connecticut. Supposedly they would have to fly somebody in from Ohio to facilitate what we're trying to do here. AI is in Palmer. They're close by. They're easier to get to us. And they have been doing some work at the Gardens of Wolverham. I don't know if you're familiar with that complex, but it's like 95% seniors. I've done a couple of bus trips up there and when they're standing there waiting for the bus, we've got canes and walkers and some wheelchairs. So these, these are people that are living in a beautiful area, but it is definitely senior.
Housing.
Senior, yeah. Separate apartments. Yep. They, they've done eight or nine projects over there. And some of the addresses I even recognize because I have them on my spreadsheet from my, my bus trips. When EDM, in, in EDM's portfolio, they listed one that I think Rita brought up a few weeks ago. Ludlow. At the Ludlow Senior Center as being involved with that. And they were questioned on just what the extent of their involvement was. And they just came out and said, we weren't involved at all. But yet it's in their portfolio. And just in the back of my mind, I'm wondering what, how many others are in there that you weren't actually involved with? It's, it's misleading. Very misleading.
Oh, one thing again, and thank you, Bobby, for those points. Obviously we've dealt with AI. The board may recall, they were the firm that did the, uh, the expansion to the highway department. But I think that also speaks to what Don was saying before is that they do have an extensive background of experience with municipal buildings of all kinds. Just like you said, the senior housing. But here we're looking for an expansion of a senior center. And it really fell by the proposal, and I can't speak to the Ludlow thing, you know, Becky's good friends with Jody maybe, or whoever's up there. But I really felt that EDM, their repertoire was senior centers. And that's really where, you know, their expertise was. And to me, and I didn't get a vote, but I felt that's, that really resonated with me. When we go off for projects in my business, same thing. We're looking for people who have a close relationship with what we want to do. We're not there to train them in doing something we need done. So, I'm sorry, Don? Sorry, we have to say Don Steer, Don?
Don Steer. Well, my experience over the years on, on project work, uh, is every project you do that is compatible, you learn something from the previous project that had we, you know, that you incorporated in that. And as I say, EDM has done numerous, uh, you know, up, up to potentially been involved up to a hundred, uh, projects. So they know, uh, senior center, uh, requirements. When I look at AI, uh, they were involved in the Greenfield Center for Wellness, uh, which was converting a Sears, uh, Sears and Roebuck building into a multiple, multiple tenant use. The, um, uh, a few other projects that I, uh, here they are. The warehousing, uh, the proposal for bathroom remodeling, uh, Amherst Housing, a, uh, to make it ADH, uh, compliant, uh, you know, the, the, the fees, uh, $9,000 for that. They, the work that they have been involved, Amherst Housing Project, um, unit 10, renovation of the kitchen, uh, et cetera. You know, non extensive projects that, and this ours being a renovation and an addition is not extensive, but is more extensive than what I think they've been involved.
Is there, is their fee all inclusive? Cause you said they had to fly someone in from Ohio. We're going to have to pay for them, for them?
No, the fee is included, what they've stayed.
It's not every time they're flying in.
No, no. And if, if I can, I mean, you tasked the committee to look in the future, 25 years or more. And for me personally, one of the, the points that EDM had was they have a gerontologist. I mean, we have a nuts and bolts issue. I mean, we have a nuts and bolts issue of the, the building itself, things that are needed in the building to be done now and possible square footages, hardscape, those kind of things that need, need to be done or may be done under an addition. But there's also program needs that have to be thought about for the, the future. And the, the fact that, and I've worked with AI and excellent people, but there was going to be, in my opinion, that learning curve to bring them onboard, plus they didn't have that background in programming for, that they made us aware of, at least in their proposal, that again, I think is necessary if we're looking 25 years, you know, out there. And, 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 you know, talking with Becky, I mean, that's something that she would have had to bring them up to speed on and, and sort of educate AI on. So that was one of the overriding reasons why I voted for EDM. As I say, it's, you've got two things. You've got the building itself, but you've also got space for pro, future program needs.
So you've all been a committee for a year now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You've all been able to go through and debate and challenge each other's opinions and questions, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. My opinion is if you are all tasked with the job and had your time to debate and counterpoint everybody's decisions and the board came out with a recommendation, I think it would be wrong for us to undermine that integrity of the board there that came up with the opinion. So, I mean, that's, that said, I'm just going to make the motion to approve EDM with the contract.
Thank you.
All right. For quick discussion, but there was a question at the meeting today about the advisory committee recommendation. It was three to nothing. I know somebody thought it was two to one. It was three to nothing for the recommendation. So any further discussion? All in favor of awarding the contract to EDM, signify by saying aye.
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 I'll notify them tomorrow and ask them to be in touch with Don, schedule a meeting with the committee.
All right. So typically, we do have a email for the building committee that I believe Don and Becky have maintained that. And obviously, if they come back to that email, they'll CC you for anything on that. So I'd like to thank the committee for coming in out tonight. Gary?
Thank you for all your hard work, too.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Just at our meeting today, two issues that we'd like just to throw out to the board to consider. First is, goes with the electric vehicle charging stations. We would like, the board would like to be involved in the placement of those. We think that, you know, our long-term potential for expanding that parking area may conflict with the potential location of the chase station. So just if we could be involved in that, that would be great. And secondly, made the chairman of the board aware that there's an issue with the water well supply over at the senior center and police station, that there, they have exceeded the wells capacity, gallonage, based upon the sprinkler system, lawn sprinkler system that is in place at the police station. And bringing it forward now because I, I believe we assume that DEP is going to get involved. We don't want it to be a stumbling block for the senior center addition or renovation.
Monitors over there, is that?
Bob.
Bob Flag?
Yes.
Does he do the usage reports?
I'm sorry?
Does he do the usage reports?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's basically, it's a PWV and well underserved or well over capacity until they turn, put the sprinklers in and exceeded it by 2,000 gallons a day?
Yeah, usually 2,000 gallons a day in the summertime. Police station is minimal use of water and the senior center also. There's no problem in terms of gallonages for their normal usage. Just when they kick the sprinklers on, they, they, they must it.
And as I think Don, Don shared, being on the original police building committee, that was not in the original plan.
No, in fact, it was rejected.
Yeah, it was rejected. I mean.
How they slid in there.
Was aware of it.
Because we share, share well.
Right.
So do we know where the valve is?
Simple as that.
Yeah. I'm talking to the chief before. They have a chair live there, too. They gotta sell.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you all.
I've given you a list before, but add, mean to that list, too. We need letters for the board to sign to, I think Ed Salerno, Jason Baroso, people who have, you know, given up service and resigned, please. Any others who might have forgotten, please share with Lauren. Bill, where is he?
He's sitting over here.
I see him. Bill?
Fabry.
How you doing?
Pick a chair, any chair.
Pick a chair, any chair. They're all warm. Okay.
They are all warm.
How you doing?
Good. How are you today?
Good, thanks. Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, sure. No problem.
Huge three-hour drive for this guy.
A what?
A three-hour drive for this guy to get here, not charging us for mileage, so that's.
Not me. Yeah. No, 15 minutes up the road.
There you, I know. So I asked Bill to be on here, again, same thing, if he could, he, you know, obviously Craig is really instrumental in what's going on with the situation and Bill does a lot of the, the testing for it.
Correct.
Oversight.
Yes.
So what do you think the potential is where we're going in the future with this?
So it's my, should I introduce myself or whatever? Bill Fabry, WJFU consultants, been retained by the town of Hanbun to conduct a landfill sampling and the private well sample.
How long?
Uh, since 2014. Actually, we've been doing work, yeah. So what happened recently, the town received a letter from the DEP, I believe it was dated October 12th, about increasing the private well sampling, essentially doubling it from roughly nine or 10 up to 20. And the reason is, part of the reason is, someone from the town, according, this is from Dan Hall, who's a section chief of the waste, or Division of Solid Waste, running the landfill essentially, nine, the resident at 98 Scantic Road had some PFAS in their well, which was above an acceptable limit in DEP's eyes. So they, the town, as you know, probably, they supplied bottled water and then the connection to the town water supply was made in early September, mid-September. So in light of that, I believe the neighbor just next to at 98, and, forgive me, I'm not sure who the town administrator is, but went to the town, okay, and contacted Dan, Dan Hall, correct?
Yes. And came in and complained that his property was not included.
Correct.
With the testing and.
Yes.
The next step was that Dan Hall was involved and then they came back with their.
With the, with the letter, essentially. So I did chat with Dan today. So what they did, they looked at our data and the wells where they're located and they expanded the search from 10 to 20. Okay? And he said that based on the data, we may be able to reduce it. So of the 10 locations that we've been sampling since February, we have three events, February, May, and August, eight of them have been non-detect with PFAS, which is moving in the right direction. I have a feeling after, they, they want to take a look at all the data after the November sampling event and make a determination from there.
To see if it's going to be congoing, ongoing?
I would suggest, I would say if the eight that have already been non-detect, I would think that's four quarterly events, they would probably eliminate those or maybe reduce them maybe to semi-annual and see what the, the new data bring.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm anticipating.
In, in your testing, you've seen only, was it the two residents?
Two residents, yeah.
And how many tests have you done at those two houses so far?
Uh, four, well, three.
So.
Well, for PFAS, three, because PFAS is new in February.
You've done three quarters worth of testing?
Correct.
And have they, every test had hit for them?
Just though, um, just, just of, just 98, 98 had something.
Every time?
Yes.
And then the other one only had it the first time?
Had it at the middle time, had it the second time.
Okay.
But under the limit.
Correct.
Okay.
The, the one that had it in the middle, in the, in the May round had it, well, under the limit.
And when do you propose to start taking the testing for the new additions?
Uh, we started contacting people today, so we wanted to get.
And I, I think I just saw something, and I think it's in our bills folder here, that you're looking to start the November sampling?
Correct, yes.
And that price that's here, the $29,000, that's for every home or is that just?
No, it's for the 20 homes or the 19 homes, the landfill. But I believe, I, I was looking at the numbers, I, because I just got the numbers in from the lab today, I think they were short about $3,300 because they, they included all the PFAS sampling for the private wells. I, I believe they made an error and, and omitted the, the monitoring wells and the surface water, which is like, was it like 15 samples?
Sort of like maybe, maybe.
Thirty-three, $34,000. Correct, yeah.
So that's going to be for that one quarter coming up?
Correct.
Okay, for the 19 homes left.
Correct.
Okay.
Bill, we have a contract with you.
Correct.
Is that, I mean, obviously you signed it at a certain amount.
Sure.
Is there a request that that's going to be modified or do you have more work that's entailed with this increased testing?
So according to DEP, in one of their letters, I can't remember if it was the February one or the most recent one, the private well sampling can only be reduced at their request. And, and in fact, we used to just sample the, the landfill wells, the monitoring wells and the surface water twice a year. Beginning this in 2023, they modified it to go four quarters a year. So again, that's, I think they want to know when the, the water line can go in. The sooner that goes in, then I think it would probably be, it would be reduced to just the mon, just the monitoring wells at the landfill.
I think that's a catch 22, though, you know? If, if I'm hearing from you that if we're missed, if we pass four quarters and we're not getting positive results, then those might fall off.
Correct.
Then why would we want to hook, why would we want to expense, hook them up if they're testing clean?
I'm not sure. I, yeah.
So I, I think maybe we need to get Dan Hall in here, too, then to talk.
Yeah. I think you probably wouldn't need to sample, and you know what, maybe, because I have no idea what the water line costs, that's not my daily book. I'm sure it's not cheap.
Not pleasant.
Yeah. What I was going to say is I guess you'd have to do a cost benefit analysis, either continue sampling, I wouldn't be surprised if the homes that are non-detect, maybe they just get on a reduced schedule instead of quarterly, maybe it's semi-annually and then maybe diannually.
Okay.
But I, I, I think they want to have enough data to demonstrate that.
Right.
Before the, before the ones.
That would make sense, yeah. Want to have the, the data.
Yeah, I am surprised, though, having seen the, the testing for the landfill for, you know, 20 years, they don't seem to be inclined to drop any tests off, even though you see NDEs throughout the list, they still require you to test for them.
This is.
I don't think you've seen a plutonium hit forever, but by gosh.
No, you're right. And, but in their eyes and EPA's eyes, PFAS is an emergent contaminant.
No, I know that, but just, I'm saying, some of the ones we've been doing for 20 years.
Yeah, yeah.
Disappear off the list.
I'll agree.
Yeah.
In fact, I've been sampling some landfills probably for 15, 20 years and, and I don't think I've seen any of them drop off.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Glacier water and they're still like, yep, keep checking. Well, we certainly appreciate the update. So Craig is the chair of the board of health.
Yeah, yeah.
He's, he's the man in charge of.
John Beck, there's the chair of the Water Commission, too, behind us.
Hey, John. And he serves an advisory role on the select board as well. Thank you, John. So now we know.
So we'll continue on with the testing for now and.
Do you think it's, it would be a good idea for you, Craig, Bob, to have another conversation with Dan? I know sometimes Dan is kind of reluctant to come to an official board meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
I believe he is, yeah.
But he doesn't mind off the record conversations.
Sure. Which I think he has had several. I don't know if he's had them with Jane.
The last one he talked, he was talking to Bob most recently. I haven't talked to him in a little while.
Right, okay. It's important to read Craig in on that as well, especially with a change in what's going on. Craig will be carrying on with it, so.
I know they're, they're very interested in this round of sampling with the, the new wells and the existing wells and, and I typically don't do this, but maybe I can make the recommendation based on my conversation with Dan, that if the, if the existing eight wells, eight private wells have been non-detect, reduce the sampling frequency.
Biannual or something.
Yeah. For at least the, the one thing I, I'll be honest, I don't understand, I'm not driving the bus with DEP, but why we need to do all the other landfill parameters. PFAS seems to be what's the issue here. And maybe they're just, they just want to see if there's any other potential contaminants associated with the landfill, like if there's chromium or cadmium or something like that. But honestly, we haven't seen anything in any of the other private wells, other than iron and manganese, which is everywhere.
What's common in this area.
Exactly.
Right, oh, yeah. And the ones we're testing now surround, you're really looking at the second ring.
Correct, yeah, I do have a.
Right, we've seen the map and it's, yeah.
I do have a map here, I believe.
So it'd be surprising to see a hit pass through a well, it doesn't get a hit and show up at the further well, so.
So the, the ones with the N are the new wells and, yeah, they're both, actually, they're both the same. So like this is an existing sampling location, these, this, this.
The circles.
Yeah, the circles. And then the ones with the new.
Testing here, now you have these ones.
98 dropped off.
These are zeros. It'd be pretty surprising to get a hit down there.
Right. And the only, the one that actually had the one hit in May was 97. And it was, it was below the standards. And then 98 was one, and it is directly downgrading. Groundwater is going to the southwest.
Right, and even though the parcel shows here, which is where the solar is, quite a far away from the capped area, you know, up here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so. But you know how water can travel, we don't know.
Especially the ones that we're sampling are likely, in my understanding, they're all bedrock wells.
Yeah.
They're all bedrock. They're installed in bedrock, yeah, so which have fractures and.
And that type of stuff, I mean, we learned that through the, the highway thing. Typically, hydraulically, it goes towards the river.
Yeah.
It would be very odd to see any of this, if there is a contamination that would migrate to the north.
Not to mention.
Away from the Scannick.
Correct, yeah, and here you have a river body right here, a stream, I'm not sure if.
And with the flow of the river, we saw the salt contamination go with the flow of the river. It did a sweep that way.
This looks like his wetlands areas also, so it is going to go towards the.
Potentially draw that way, yeah.
Okay.
Do you care for that? You want to keep?
Yes, yeah.
Sure. Can you have that, too?
Well, Bill was a great wrap up and I think it's actually good for the board, you know, for you to come in every.
Sure. No problem, anytime.
You know, anytime. Get your gas money from Bob. He's fine. So, great.
All right, I'm free to go.
You're relieved.
Thanks so much.
See you next year.
I'll probably be in once the new results come in, potentially.
Paul, when do you think, though, you said you're going to start sampling, when do you have the results, you think?
So the challenge with the private wells is that everyone's on their own schedule.
Yeah.
So it's going to take probably a week to two weeks. So I'm assuming by the end of, probably the first week in December for everybody. Once we, we collect them, I think we have like four or five tomorrow, and then they'll just start trickling it. It takes like a week to 10 days.
Okay.
For the results for each location.
Thank you. Hey, Finn. Whoa. Something new?
Got a competition going on. Got a competition going on.
November.
Wow. I recognize the team logo, but they.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'm a little casual today. I spilled some coffee on my shirt. There's sweat shit on.
Good for now. So, so, just an update.
Yeah, so.
Sorry, Finn McCool is giving us an update on the beaver situation in town.
Yes. You've, pretty quick, I think. So the first issue started over on Carmody Road, as you head in south on the left side there, along the Scannick River, there was a pretty big backup of, of water. So the first issue started over on Carmody Road, as you head in south on the left side there, along the Scannick River, there was a pretty big backup of water. Board decided to declare it a health emergency because it was backing up into the back of properties that had septic systems there. Once that was done, we went ahead and hired the consulting company that went out there. They let us know, we're going to need to trap some of these beavers, it's just what you need to do to be able to solve this issue. And then to help, you know, as years go on, to install like a, basically a cage around the culvert. So town went ahead and hired a beaver trapper. He went out there, so far he's caught four beavers, and he believes that that was the extent of it. There's been no activity since. Since then, the water level has gone down significantly. We're keeping an eye on it. So the issue there seems to be being resolved, thankfully. And again, that's going to be something that might need to be done yearly or every other year. The other issue, well, we hired him again to do some more trapping on, along East Long Meadow Road. He caught, I think, one beaver there, and again, it seemed to resolve the issue. It's slowing down again. There's another issue that came up.
I was going to ask about the old orchard.
Yeah.
The East Long Meadow problem, we had a resident reach out to us, but the source is in East Long Meadow.
Yeah, so the resident reached out to me, it was awesome, he took me out, we hike, you know, quarter mile, half a mile back onto the woods, took a look at the dam, used our location, realized, you know, this is an East Long Meadow issue. So right now, I'm working with the East Long Meadow Director, who I'm acquaintance, or I work with her a lot, Tammy Spencer, she's the director over there. So that's something we're kind of, it's like, it's right on the line, so it seems like it's on East Long Meadows' side, but obviously, we want to work with them, they're our neighbors, so her and I are kind of coming up with a game plan, making sure that it's definitely on their side, something they're going to handle. If it's like right on the line, we got to kind of figure out a game plan where we can kind of work together to get it resolved.
How about Glendale?
Um, I.
I thought Mark was able to get in there.
Yeah, he was, Mark, yeah, Mark has been on top of it, and I can't thank him enough for seeing his praises enough for being so on top of, you know, getting these trappers and getting the situation solved. I believe that situation is sorted.
Draining away.
Yeah, it's, it's great, every, it seems, everything's going in the right direction, so. Yeah, exactly, so I couldn't be happier, but that's really all I had for an update. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to kind of.
Sure, any, I'll ask the question, Don wants, so how's the budget this year?
Budgets, budgets going on, all right. The only thing I think I would let the board be aware of is Long Meadows is going through a wage-in-classification study. It doesn't seem that it's going to impact our jobs too much, because ours were fairly new when they were created, besides maybe my own. Because I was just hired on as the Long Meadow Director, that didn't take in account for the other towns, the other positions.
But this would be inside the current fiscal year, or they're looking ahead to next fiscal year?
It's going to be within this fiscal year.
Retroactive, maybe?
Yeah, or not retroactive, but it's going to be, not retroed, but it would be starting as soon as they finish.
That's interesting.
No kidding, especially when they've already got all their budgets.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of interesting, so like, I'm definitely going to make sure that you guys are all aware as soon as anything, if anything changes, I'm not sure.
That would be.
Will be any changes.
Just from a funding standpoint, if you were in our experience.
Yeah, so our town manager had planned for this because it had taken so long, it started in the last fiscal year, so they put funding aside. But that's the only kind of hiccup I would ever anticipate, but of course, all the towns that we're working with will be the first to know if there's any kind of change that would happen.
I know this is kind of like forward-thinking, because we have the same thing happening with dispatch next year, is there any grant that's expiring that we should be concerned with, with next fiscal year?
Not with our department, I know like that first year, you know, we didn't have the full staff, so we weren't able to expend all of our funding. We still got the same base funding for that next year, which was still short, of course, for last fiscal year. But this fiscal year, we did get that base funding plus an additional funding, which should, should cover.
This year, but how?
This year.
Next year is the grant, good for next year?
It will be good for the next year, and from the state, they've said we're funded through like, I think it's 2028, so if we can make this work, you know, we're years and years out of, you know, state funding for our health department, so.
That's good news.
Yeah, yeah, it's very good news.
All right.
All right.
So the other thing.
The beavers, how has payment gone for that?
I might have to ask, but I'm not sure where, how the funding got paid for the beaver trapping, you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We have an account, $2,500 in the account for wildlife control. So we were initially thinking of putting money in the animal control account, but then we.
We have a wildlife control now.
This is what it's for.
Okay.
Okay, and that should cover our part?
Yeah, that definitely, that should definitely cover it, yeah.
Or no, we're.
What's that?
Forty-two, or that's not going to happen, or?
Forty-two.
Your Summers Row thing? That was the other thing potentially Finn might have been talking about, the public hearing you were going to need.
Oh, yeah, we were public hearing next week, right?
Yeah, next week, that has to do with the septic system. Nothing to do with town funding anything.
So it's a variance you're looking for next week?
It's going to be a variance, and you guys have given me the authority to give out variances just in the last year, but this is kind of like, it needs to have a hearing because it's a public water supply.
Right, yeah.
So they have to notify the abutters, they got to make sure they can come here if they have any questions. There's no, I mean, in my opinion, there's no reason any of the abutters would be upset. Anything, it's, it is actually helping them by pulling the septic system closer to Shell's water supply and away from abutters' wells. And the only people that use the water at the Shell station are the employees and the people, you know, using the bathroom, washing their hands, no one's really.
I would imagine the usage is pretty low there.
Yeah, it is, it is, but it's, it's spelt out in Title V regulation, this is the process they have to go through.
You'll have all of it vote for us next week.
Have, yeah, you'll have all of it well beforehand, so.
Okay, we'll put you on for around 8:30, 9 o'clock.
Whenever you want me.
You won't be here, but.
I'll be.
Lock off when you leave. Thanks, Finn.
Thanks, Finn. Thank you, guys.
All right, STM, look back, my ass and Doug, if you wanted to stop in, and first off, want to congratulate, thank the Advisory Committee for their diligence, both remote and in person.
Well, I appreciate that. We, it was a difficult town meeting to run up to, I have to say, we had several challenges, people, you know, various issues and whatnot, but, you know, it came to be because of, I want to publicly thank Lauren and Bob and Jane, they each chipped in and helped advisory do things that we had to do. I think town meeting went reasonably well, considering it was, you know, a big meeting for the, for the fall.
So your recap, one thing you mentioned was that, you know, obviously you came up with a recommendation for a stabilization transfer to get to a targeted ballpark, if you will. And I think you said that there's still work to be done between the assessors and the other financial people that will tighten down the number, there may be more income coming in that could further bring down the tax rate increase.
Right, we believe that the target number, which we're, we're using a 4% is on the high end of the estimate. And that if there's any variation from that, it should be on the downward side.
Okay, more revenue, more, more, things like that.
Valuations, you know, exactly, I mean, there's all those little variables that until they're actually finalized, we won't know, but these were, these were the best numbers we could come up with, with what we had, what we were working with. And I actually went back and looked, Division of Local Services keeps, you know, enormous amounts of data, and one of the things they keep is the average real estate tax bill. And for 2023, the average real estate tax bill in town is $5,831. Average, average tax bill.
Not you?
And if we use 4%, the average tax bill would go up $233. Now, obviously, that's an increase, any increase is something which we try to avoid, but I think in the environment that we've been in, if we can achieve that, I think that's a good result for the town. I think that's a fair balance between providing the services that the town needs and, you know, keeping the burden on the taxpayer, you know, within reason.
And of course, the one thing we always have to mention is that, that 200 is not quarterly, because it's always added to the last two tax bills.
Right.
Down the February and May bill.
Right, yeah. You're really getting into the weeds with the calculation, but that's exactly right. I mean, we've already, we've already seen two tax bills in the current year, which have been, you know, taxed at the previous rate. So the next two bills which come will be makeup bills, so yes, it'll, it'll look like a larger increase because of that.
Right, back ended, if you will. And I guess the question, we've tentatively scheduled that classification hearing, typically the first Monday in Don, Monday in December, Don?
Yeah.
Yeah, and hopefully, the assessors will be ready to, you know, bring forth what they have, they have a month to do it. Now that somebody's back from the Caribbean, hopefully they can get the work.
I have a question, the treasurer mentioned to me that the town is earning very significant revenue from reserve funds in the range of $14,000. Have you discussed using that as revenue, or?
We, to answer your question, no, we haven't discussed that, but he did share that with us as well, you know, last week, that is generating, well, significant amount of revenue.
But now, does it stay in stabilization at this point? But it could be targeted towards general fund instead?
Yes, okay. Yeah, so.
Policy decision for the town.
Is that all it takes? Okay.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good problem to have, and you know, the stabilization has been generating more interest than.
But I understand, would it be retroactive, though? If the boards voted that we feel interest that is gained on the town savings fund shall be targeted towards general fund revenue, do we go back and recapture that money that's been in there? That's the question.
I think, I don't know the answer.
For DOR.
That's a cliff, that's, that's, that's an answer, you know, a question for Cliff and Dick, which I'm sure they would bring to.
Well, with that type of number, that's a tremendous thing, you're talking hundreds right there. You brought the account down, or the town meeting brought the account down to what, 1.8, 1.7, something?
Stabilization?
Yeah.
It's 1.8 plus.
Still a good number.
It's, it's very healthy, keep in mind.
Our low, 700?
$700, yes, yes.
Five, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, it occurred to me, there was this fellow who asked the meeting, at meeting, you know, why do we basically have this money? And, you know, of course, you know, you answer the best you can at the time, but, you know, the fuller answer is to avoid a repeat of, you know, 2005 and '06, when you're making decisions between whether you keep things open or not.
Yep.
Never want to revisit that.
The town does need a bond rating at some point, having healthy reserves. Need a lower interest rate.
Yeah.
Okay, CPA did take a look, that was behind Green Meadows, and yeah, they haven't done that project on the, on the playscapes yet.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they're hoping to have it done in the fall.
Oh, we're running out of fall.
Exactly, I meant to.
My granddaughter on the thing, and it was same as it was last year.
I meant to ask Aaron at town meeting, but, you know, get swept up on other issues and didn't have an opportunity.
Is there anything you need from us to wrap up from town meeting, any?
I don't, other than working on the microphones, no, no. I mean, that, that is frustrating, frankly.
It's frustrating going back and watching the YouTube video, I mean, it's just, the sound quality is just so darn bad.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, that, that is something that we have to address, because it becomes a distraction.
Well, I hate to say it, but we've been, and through Craig's expertise, kind of going and doing whatever, I wonder if we should actually just go out and hire a firm that knows how to do it?
I wonder if we should just address that whole cafeteria with a sound system, so we're not using the outdated stuff that's there, and bringing all our stuff from here to there, the stuff that here is fairly adequate, that large room there, it's not adequate.
Right.
And then when we use their projectors and stuff, that's, looks like secondhand equipment, honestly, you know, you looked at the projector they lent us, and you know, cracks on the thing, or scuff marks on the lens, you couldn't see stuff on screen. So, you know, it's, it's our building, do we invest in for the two times a year town meetings to have a good projection system and a good audio system in the building that would come in useful over the years?
I mean, we're certainly fortunate, we were spoiled by Bethlehem Baptist, you know, the nice, the chairs were a lot nicer.
Very nice. Fell asleep twice.
It's just, you know, I would like to see the sound system.
That's a real problem.
That is.
And maybe we should be.
Yeah, we need, we need the mics, John, we need to have microphones two or three places.
Scattered around.
You know what I mean?
Yep, I've been watching a lot of other towns on YouTube, and, you know, some of them, gosh, the quality in their meetings, but even the town meetings they have, they've solved these things, and it's just, because we go back and, Don, I know you spent some time looking over some previous town meetings, and you find yourself, what was exactly said? What? So, something to look at in the coming year, I think, for sure.
They probably hire a firm to go in there, and somebody that's a professional in their field.
Could be.
And set the whole place up, wire for sound, as they say.
But you also make the point, and it's a good point, like, it's a school building, if you look at what they did at Minnetog, they hired that, I think the firm from South Hadley, that handles the audiovisual in the auditorium, because they know that when the theater group was looking to rent it, they actually had to pay them to use that stuff there, even though it's the school property.
Reality of that cafeteria, and TWB needs sound panels on the ceiling to deflect the sound, and that's going to help a lot.
Yeah.
Well, addition to sound, also an LCD projector, a new one, and a better screen.
All right, how much, how much does the church want to host a town meeting every year?
Be worth it.
Exactly.
Well, it's just, you know, it would be nice to address that, because I'm sure that it's, you know, at minimum, it's an annoyance to attendees, and at worst, it may actually deter some people from getting up and, you know, saying their piece on whatever the issue.
That's it, but I mean, historically, it's hard, too, we go back and want to see, what was that and stuff? I know that anyone who's watching the YouTube video, Bob and I have talked about the fact the YouTube cuts off in the middle of Article, gosh, Article 12, at two, just after two hours. So Bob is going to work at seeing how he can go ahead and join Part A and Part B together, or I don't even care if you just put them on as two separate parts, you know, just to get it done, because we missed the government study, we missed the solar, all the school stuff, and half the talk on the master plant.
I spent some time with that this afternoon, news is not good.
Like we can't find the other recording?
Well, with that, I think I'm done.
Not your circus, not your monkey, okay, thank you.
But anyway, I think.
Good job by the entire financial team, I thought, for as much as we had the special town meeting, it went well.
While, while we're still, while Doug's still here, and we're still talking about town meeting, let's look forward to annual town meeting. Do you see anything coming forward as far as CPC funding for anything? Should we look into that Mill Road proposal for that?
The first, to answer your first question, the Housing Authority, I believe, is going to have some, some, one request for lighting, which I think is pretty modest, I want to say it's in the 15 range. In terms of the Mill Road thing, I, I would like to see something done there. I had an informal conversation with one of the people on Concom, who said that, you know, there's a 25-foot, you know, no disturb rule in town. You know, 25 foot from the high watermark is not supposed to be disturbed for any reason, which brings.
And now we just got.
That entire area within.
So what's the point of that area, then?
Well, as opposed to, we just got notified by Concom, Bonnie gave Lauren a letter, and I think the board as well, that they're seeing some, let's say, some cutting being done on Genevieve that's being thrown into the Mill Pond area. And how do we, who's in charge of policing that, if you will?
Well, it's town property.
Right. So.
I assume that would be.
On the branches and figure out where they come from, but, you know.
Yeah.
Was that our own bylaw, the 25-foot buffer of no disturbs zone in there?
I believe it is a town bylaw, but don't quote me on that. Is it town bylaw?
Well, the town bylaw is tighter than the state.
Yeah. So we could loosen our own bylaw and maybe give ourselves a little leeway when it comes to doing specifically, you know, the bench project.
I'm not talking about, like, dredging the.
Right.
I was saying, freshen it up a little bit. People might want to use it as what it was intended for.
Yeah.
But I don't think dredging's out of the thing. Don will remember. You go back to what Art Booth was doing back when they rebuilt Mill Pond. And that included dredging at the time. And that's, you know, back when they put those benches there, they were pretty far off the thing. But as it silts in, oh my gosh, now it spreads. So, but.
That was a big project.
To dredge.
That was a big project.
Oh, yeah. Right.
And Art basically did as much as he had funding for, which is why the entire area wasn't dredged. It's essentially the donut hole in the middle there.
But if it's a matter of funding, I know if it's permitting through, God forbid, the Army Corps of Engineers, that can take forever. But it would qualify for CPA funding to do. If it's 100,000 to dredge it, to me, that's, at this point, a better use than acquiring more land. You know, because it's.
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to pit one against the other, but I don't disagree. I wouldn't mind spending some money over there. It's town property.
We have to maintain what you bought. That's the.
Goes down to right there. It looks like a haggard mess.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we get the, whatever happened to the Open Space Committee? Another committee.
But anyway, to answer your question, the only one I'm aware of is housing. And, you know, if we want to try to do something there, it'd be a matter of finding somebody who, you know, wants to sponsor the request and wants to bring that forward. And that's a big project. And that's.
Anything from parks that you're aware of? Or, I mean, they've had requests in the past.
We can have discussions as it goes along.
I know they want a new scoreboard.
Do they?
Well, that's right. Yeah. There was discussion.
They were at Fenway? Re-VM Fenway?
Yeah, except only the Cowboys have the full video screen.
New, the new Gillette Stadium?
Yeah. I assume that things like scoreboards would go under recreation, but I'd have to look at that.
Make it out of materials. It'll be.
Yeah.
Can you finish, John? Bonnie asked how the selectmen would like Academy Hall projects managed.
Well.
When they allocated the funding.
Well, in the past, they've typically, Doug, you signed, you and another member of the CPA signed the bills for them. I thought the packet of information we had, Connie, was pretty complete, like the quotes and what was being done. So.
What board is overseeing it?
You know?
Yeah. CPA never oversees the projects. We don't, we don't take on any oversight.
Right. But I think we have those, we have everything there for Bob to send out a purchase order, basically, for the work.
Yeah.
So.
I can do that. I mean, I can be in touch with the firms.
Sure.
And according to the specifications, to the project.
And the good thing is, the inspection part is done by us, so there's no fee for the permit per se, even though the inspection costs money.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody in favor of Bob honchoing that with?
Hey.
Thank you, Don.
Honcho away.
Hey, Eric. Thanks. All right. Thanks again.
Thanks very much.
You're still on the search for a new member, right?
Yes, we're going to try to interview somebody next week. Actually, I've got to get in touch with Lauren tomorrow about posting. Got to pull in another favor. And we're also still looking for a clerk, but.
Can you pull me off of the agenda off the members list?
Yeah.
I saw that. That was nice.
Have a good night.
Quitter.
Can't quit something that never started.
Yeah, right. South Tower lease. Basically, I did talk to Rose today. She is very close to finishing it. She actually had court work today. So for another town, believe it or not, somebody not us.
Is this the SBA lease on commercial?
Basically, yeah. There was some interesting stuff. If you look at what they're proposing, we got to make sure we protect our interests because they were throwing some words in there, like the entire property was covered by their lease, rather than, I think we go back and, Don, I think we put that in back in 04 something. And basically, they have a.
Property?
Well, they leased, basically, it's 100 foot square for the tower. And they had some language in there that was, could have been ambiguous. And I think we got to make sure we tighten it down because, to be honest, they're not working for us. And that's why we have a lawyer.
Here's my question. If we're leasing them the tower, the space for the tower, but then we're leasing space for transmitters, why are we not getting those transmitters for free on there?
Good point. We can bring that up, you know. But.
There's public safety edge. I think it's, I think there's somewhere in the state statute, somewhere. I could be completely wrong on this, but I thought, I saw somewhere in one stat, because it's public safety infrastructure, that it's either reduced or no charge. I'd have to find that again.
Good thing. Yeah, find out if other towns are doing a better job of basically holding their feet to the fire, saying, okay, you want this? What are we getting for it?
Right.
Right. Besides just money, because you're making money off the renties, you know.
Right. And we're one of them.
Well, that's the thing. Right. And I remember Jeff coming in, you know, with the numbers they were paying for putting those extra repeaters on there, back when they were changing over to digital. It was pretty, we'd pay a hefty fee. Yeah. So anyhow, we should have that ready for next Monday, I think, at this point. Gatsby, government accounting, ugly word. I thought Dick had some familiarity with this. It's something that the, basically, the treasurer and the accountant like to bring up, you know, it's a requirement to get done. And what number are we up to now? Was Gatsby 45 was the last one?
It's a 75, and then there's, we're into the 90s, I think.
Already?
96 or 97 now.
So, basically, they changed the standards. They want to make sure that you're doing your proper accounting. Don, some of the other thing was making sure, what was the thing, Dick? Was it OPEB? You're making sure you have enough figured for future expenses, things like that. It's just making.
The actuarial study.
Right. So, I mean, it's just making sure your study is up to date, your values on the properties you own are up to date and stuff like that. But it's not much different than the audit we get from Scanlam. You hire somebody to do it, and you verify their numbers, and it comes back to you.
I think the state is going to come in with a retirement, and they come in with a schedule for OPEB, similar to what they did for funding of the retirement system.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. That's coming our way.
Great. What do we got? What do we got? 12 more years to come up the square around the, or is it now 14?
12.
I think I pushed a year because I jumped on 37 or something like that.
No, I think we're all right. I think it's 36 still.
No, stay on top of it, will you? Your buddy, Richard or whatever.
I don't call it that. Next time I see him, Don, it's a place in the Cape.
Oh, while you're staying there. That'd be great. Yeah. Thanks, Don. Give us your report, Bob.
Okay. Other than town meeting, the hearing, the hearing on the decision of the selectmen involving the Tiger case was upheld. The judge upheld the decision of the select, sent out a copy of that today, I believe.
Right. So I talked to Rose, and she is working with Shelley on the proper next step, i.e. contacting the people who does the proper thing. And I know somebody had a question, is there an appeal process, like that? No. So is there a timeline, then, when things have to be done? And that's what she is.
Information.
No, Rose is working on that. She's contacting.
With Shelley.
Right. But she's contacted that lady who actually attended our meeting virtually, and they'll give her some advice. I think it's from agriculture, actually. Yeah.
We did have an interview with the new candidate for conservation agent and stormwater coordinator. The chair of the Granby Conservation Commission was on the Zoom call for that. I think both our Conservation Commission members who zoomed in, as well as the Granby Conservation Chair, thought we should take the next step. And that is, I suggested that candidate come to our next Conservation Commission meeting on the 15th. And it's also been arranged that he will attend the Conservation Commission meeting in Granby on the 14th of this month. And if both committees feel as though this is the right person, we'll move ahead with hiring. So we've done the ADA training, working with RISE Engineering, and we have a new issue here with Gary. Grant contract and design contract for the East Main Street Bridge are signed by the state and completed, and the project will get underway shortly. Much of the time is already been focused on grants for fiber optics. And a staff meeting coming up this week on Wednesday is going to be focused on getting departments to implement Laserfish and to tell them that I'm going to be hiring a firm with grant money to come in as far as inputting older documents into the system. Also, as I mentioned earlier, I've notified Community Paradigm, and I've also notified BHB of decisions made at the town meeting. So we're ready to go tomorrow. I'll be in touch with the firms. We're going to be working on Academy Hall and also the other decision that was made tonight. So that's the report.
And we'll say on Laserfish, Lauren, I think we talked about that selectmen minutes, if you take a, I hate this browser. Move on. It's, no. Need a mouse.
Quite a few years are now in the system.
Right. Think if the board checks, the minutes for selectmen are back to 2007. And with that, planning their minutes go back to 1985. So, and I think, and there's some more minutes. A lot of these were copied from the old website.
Yeah.
So they're able to dump on there. So, I know we have Parks ones to put on there, Concom. It's funny, we have more old Concom minutes than new ones. You know, I don't know if you had a chance to reach out to them and ask what's happening.
I'll ask them again.
Oh, they posted the video. But it's funny, you watch the video, and they're approving the written minutes. So they must have them in writing. So why can't they put them up? Crazy.
Any issues, by the way, with new employees? Space.
What?
Space is the issue we've had a preliminary discussion about with members of the Conservation Commission. If, in fact, there is a hire who will be here several days a week, where do we put that person? The only thing I can think of, frankly, is to get those filing cabinets inputted and moved, and maybe create a cubicle or two, one for the veterans agent and one for the conservation agent in Melville, in that space. I don't see that there's space in the conservation office. And so we're, that's the next problem.
Well, the cleanup thing is good. I do want to compliment Lauren on the job in the selectmen's office. Looks pretty good. It's even better than Bob's desk, which he keeps, you know, showing off.
Who noticed the cleanup in the selectmen's office? And who didn't?
Yeah, exactly. Don, you didn't say a word about it, really.
Skated right over that.
Thank Jane for helping that one.
Thank you. We have a request to, actually, the art show has moved from.
The 19th to the 18th, yeah.
The 18th.
Okay. I found this on the web. For the art show has moved from the 19th. Check it out.
Thank you, Siri. So. They're watching us all the time. So, we have a request for the one-day permit. And I would say we're also going to make a motion to cancel the previous one-day permit as well. So we'll take a motion to cancel the previous permit on the 19th and issue it for the 18th from 2 to 7 at the senior center for the purpose of art and receiving.
Let's move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any department reports? I know we have a planning board meeting this Friday, sorry, this Wednesday. Was there another meeting today? I heard a lot of noise downstairs.
Somebody was meeting with, must have been sports program or something.
Oh, okay. Nothing posted. The board, we have been contacted by the Paradigm Firm, who is interviewing each of us individually for our thoughts on their search, right? Bernie reached out to all of us. I think you two have talked already?
Talked on today.
And I would talk to him on Wednesday. So, anything?
No, it's quiet over here today.
Okay. And what's happening with the school?
Planning committee on the 14th, November 14th. But I also have, I put together a package here for the, our contract with cables up.
I was actually just looking at that right here, yeah.
So here's a little information. Included in the packet is a, our current contract, our current agreement, a guide, the guide that the state puts out for renewal, the application that they haven't filed with us yet. And, but it was interesting because I'm looking on the state website, and they keep track of the subscriber account.
Drop, drop, drop.
The cable. And if you notice, they, the cable has dropped 26.3% since 2000, in the last nine years. It originally started off with 1,673 subscribers, and down to 1,248.
Just cable, just TV cable, right?
Just cable, yeah.
And stayed pretty steady for 20 years until all of a sudden, a huge drop.
Page that up.
That's on page right over there, first top page.
I was deep in there.
No, it's the part Don typed. The rest of it is all copied. You must have been up all night. Do you keep the laptop on the treadmill, or do you just?
No, I keep the laptop, which really, which really upsets Mrs. Davenport. I keep the laptop on the, on the thing next to the little, you know, desk next to my bed. And then I do, I do, I can't figure it out when I'm on the bike. I can't do the weights. I can't do the weights with the laptop, but I can put it on the bike and paddle and do the bike.
So looking at this, Don, is this strictly cable TV, or is this?
I believe it's just cables and scrub.
Not internet, just TV, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Because I think that's how they're like with the Nielsen's and stuff like that, they go off strictly.
So, I mean, it's obviously, obviously, it's due to, you know, streaming.
Copy for you, Lauren.
You know what's also interesting in that cable contract that you brought up? That there's a requirement in here that they have to provide us equipment for public access.
Yes. And we have to charge the subscribers.
But it's listed in here. It doesn't say anything about charging subscribers. It states specifically in there that they must provide so much equipment upfront for free. You know, any maintenance after that would have been all right.
They're going to pass that along, though.
Right. And it's the thing, like I say, if you go back.
It doesn't say that. It doesn't say that. They'll pass that along.
It's in there because we had to take a vote not to do it when we had the cable study committee. Actually, too bad Rita's not here. She was actually on that committee at that time. So.
There's other things that I know that other towns have done, like the rent controls and things like that. But, you know, one of the things that I found interesting, some of the towns are moving towards senior citizen discount, not just the basic, but for tiers, you know, two and three as well.
That sounds a little self-serving there, Don.
It's just.
Is that coming?
Slip that in.
Was that coming from the provider, or is that coming through the programs like the low-income and senior eligible?
That's through the provider. That's in the contract. Yeah. But I don't understand why they haven't reached out to us, saying their contract's coming up. What are you going to do?
They're too busy mailing our residents.
Yeah, right. Well, we did get in touch with the new guy. So he did have a conversation back and forth with Pam. So let's, Lauren, let's resurrect that and figure out when we can get him here. John, exactly.
He did call once since I've been here.
Oh, okay.
What did he want?
I resign a rep for cable.
I didn't know who he was at the time. He just said his name. I didn't know what it was regarding. Left a message.
Okay. All right. Any more business come before the board? Dad? John? Connie? All right?
Want you to adjourn?
Want you to adjourn.
Second.
You guys, you fight it out in the minute.
Clarify that for me.
Yeah, right. Exactly. All in favor? All right. Look who did it last week and flip it. Basically, that's.